Evening everyone, welcome to the October 8th regular session of the School Board of Directors. We're gonna have a moment of silence for Mr. James Palmer, who has been an employee since 2008, who recently passed. Thank you. The first item on the work session agenda tonight is the Pledge of Allegiance by our Highland Park Elementary School students. If you all could come up to the microphone, that would be great.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The second item on our work session agenda is a presentation by our Highland Park Elementary School Principal, Ms. Joanne DeVito, about their Foster Grandparent Program. Ms. DeVito?
Before we begin, I would just like to say that we can say happy birthday to Ms. Bailey.
Good evening, everyone. So I would like to thank some of my students here. We have Angeli, Janesa, Alicia, Hadi, Gur Levine, and Rowan. So thank you for all your help today. So for those of you that don't know me, my name's Joanne DeVito, the proud principal of Highland Park Elementary School. We are thrilled tonight to share with you a very special and successful program, a partnership with the Delaware County's Foster Grandparent Program that only strengthens our wonderful, wonderful Highland Park community. So I'm gonna let 4th grader Rowan Curry introduce you to someone very special.
Hi, I'm Rowan Curry, a student in Mrs. C. O'Chitty's classroom at Highland Park. Each day, we have a pleasure of Ms. Bailey's presence in our classroom. We love having her in 302. Who doesn't love a doting grandmother, am I right?
The Foster Grandparent Program is an intergenerational program where individuals 55 and older, they mentor and tutor children in a classroom setting.
She helps out with the teacher, she helps out with the kids.
Like, someone's going through something. Ms. Bailey, she'll help them out, try to figure out what's wrong.
What we're providing is like a friendship, you know, a different kind of friendship.
Since the spring of 2013, Highland Park has had four grandparents. Last year, we had two. We had Ms. Sandra Sharper, who was here for several years. And our current grandparent, Ms. Debbie Bailey, has been assigned to our 4th grade with Mrs. C. O'Chitty. She has logged 4,176 hours.
I've been here for five years and I love it. I absolutely love it.
When I heard I was getting a foster grandparent, I had no clue what it was.
When I saw Ms. Sharper, I thought, I was like, we have two teachers. And then I figured out she was a person who would help.
You realize that the volunteer is to help them, the volunteer is there to give them hugs, the volunteer is to give them that extra attention, that grandparent love, where they can love their grandchildren and they can send them back home to their parents.
She explains, "I'm just here to do what your grandmother would do for you."
She's like, really, really nice. She'll help you with things, she gives you stuff.
She gave us candy, she gave us hugs, like if we were sad or something. If we needed help, she'd be right next to us.
I just trained myself to look and see who is maybe, you know, didn't have such a good, who didn't want to wake up that early.
Kid's having a bad day and just needs to talk to someone, doesn't really want to talk to their teacher. They can reach out to their grandparent.
You could just talk to the foster grandparents and tell them how you feel. And then they will help you and will always be there for you.
That's what just grandparents give, that extra love and attention when a child needs it.
A school of 800 kids, the more bodies to help out and look out for kids, the better.
She helped my teacher, Mrs. C. O'Chitty, around with getting things. And she also helped some of the students when they had trouble.
The regular teacher teaches you like in front of the class and teaches you like everything you need to know. But if you need help on one specific thing, then you could just ask them and they would help you on that one.
They help create meaningful relationships with our kids, showing them unconditional love and companionship, and really help our kids reach their full potential.
The kids, I just can't get over how they really make me feel special. They're always doing something for me.
Me and my friend Alicia, we went on a computer on Google Docs and we decorated this paper. It was like things that classmates had said about her, how helpful and nice she was.
They said that they liked candy, free hugs, that she was really kind, she's nice. And then she was so happy when we gave her the gift. I don't know, maybe she almost cried. She almost shed a tear, I think.
It's funny how I thought that they would need me. I mean, it's like we both need each other.
It's a win-win, great intergenerational program for everyone around.
I could imagine how people don't have a foster grandparent 'cause like it's really helpful to have another grandparent in a teacher's class, just helping out.
I think the more people that do it, the better. The more love in a building and attention for kids couldn't hurt.
So I do want to thank our social worker, Dina Hanakozar, who puts all our wonderful, helps with all our wonderful programs at the school. And Mrs. Bailey is here tonight. Mrs. [applause]. So thank you again, Mrs. Bailey, we appreciate you. And thank you, everyone, and especially my Highland Park family, you guys are top-notch. Thank you. It truly does take a village and we appreciate you being part of the Highland Park Village, Ms. Bailey. Thank you. The next item on our work session agenda is a presentation by the Aronomic Elementary School Principal, Mr. Josh Rehag, about the happenings that make Aronomic a special place.
Well, let me start off by saying I was not nervous until I just saw that presentation. So Highland Park, you guys rock, that was absolutely awesome. So tough shoes to fill. So, good evening, members of the board, our families, and most importantly, our parents and students. My name is Josh Rehag and I have the privilege of serving as the principal of Aronomic Elementary School. Prior to coming to Aronomic, I worked at the high school for 14 years. During my 14 years there, I always preached about all the amazing events, activities, and clubs our high school had to offer our students. Coming to Aronomic, I quickly learned that it's not just a high school thing, but something that is ingrained in our district culture. Although the year has just begun, I'd like to offer both a sneak peek and just a little snapshot into the events and the activities, the clubs and intermurals that make Aronomic a strong school culture and lay the groundwork for our royal community. Please sit back, enjoy this little snapshot of what we have to offer at Aronomic.
My favorite thing about Aronomic is meeting new people and doing all the stuff that we do in Aronomic.
I like the turkey trot and the reindeer romp because I like to have fun and run with my friends. You run around the entire school and race each other to the finish line to get a turkey hat. It's not about winning or losing, it's just about to have fun.
Family Heritage Night, every year, me and my family participate in it. We bring different foods and we get to try different types of foods. We watch people dance, you could get hennas, you could do different art things.
One of the things that we do is the talent show. It's really fun 'cause like everybody has different stuff that they're good at. Sometimes people like do karate, 'cause sometimes they're really good at karate. Sometimes people like dance, like me. Sometimes people sing, sometimes people tell jokes. People do a lot of stuff that they're really good at.
I like to do Reading Olympics.
It's fun, 'cause I love reading and we read. And then in April, we go to a competition and answer questions about the books.
We were one point away for getting 40, and we got a white ribbon.
We have a bunch of specials, which are fun, too. We have art, library, and gym, and music, and they're all fun. And you can join the chorus or band for Mr. Marguerite.
The winter concert happens in the winter and the spring concert happens in the spring. We always play music, the orchestra plays in the spring concert and only the band plays in the winter concert. And also sometimes we go to the gala show in high school, and there's a bunch of people there. It makes me feel proud and happy to get to participate.
I just want to say thank you for letting me come to this school, and I love it here. So, thank you.
Bye.
So I don't know if you guys saw little Roche Kai, who's a 3rd grader. What a, what a talent. So she talked about a big crowd at the gala, but I do need to put a plug in. This summer, she played at Carnegie Hall in New York, which is pretty awesome for a 3rd grader. So she's quite an accomplished pianist. Unfortunately, you just, we don't have clips of all of the happenings throughout the year to share with you tonight. However, I would like to take this opportunity to share the things that make us who we are. Much like an Oscar speech, I want to apologize in advance if I missed any of the awesome events here at Aronomic. I do want to also put a plug in for a lot of our teachers, Aronomic staff, who are out here tonight in support and help make Aronomic a great place. So as far as intermurals are concerned, Mr. Dunn, who is one of our, who is our phys ed teacher, holds events in the mornings, anywhere from mat ball to flag football to a great 3-on-3 basketball tournament that most of our 4th and 5th graders participate in, almost all of them, which is pretty awesome. Our Aronomic Clubs with the Reading Olympics, the Art Club. We started a STEM Club last year, which we're gonna be continuing. A Royal Scholars Tutoring Club, which is a great partnership with our Upper Darby High School students. A Running Club. We have a Turkey Trot and Reindeer Rump, which you guys have seen. Our Family Heritage Night, I like to think is second to none and is run by Ms. Sally King, who's in the audience tonight, who's hiding her head as we speak. We have our, obviously, awesome Book Fair, a Snowball Social. Our kids throwback to the 1950s throughout the year. They put on their poodle skirts. And we have a 50s Dance for our 4th and 5th graders. An Aronomic's Got Talent, you saw a little clip of that, but a great night. And obviously, our Color Day and May Day, as well as our Harvest Festival. Our Home and School is super active and I encourage you guys to get out to many of these events. Things like the Community Movie Night, our Harvest Festival, which is a plug, November the 2nd with hayrides and a bonfire. Our Many Bingo Nights, our Book Fair, and I'm repeating some of the ones that I already said. But come out, see our winter concerts, and I look forward to making a great year, full of memories, and we hope to see you there. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Rehag, and to all the staff members who make, and the parents that make all those great events possible at our schools. Each month, we get to highlight a couple different schools. So if you come every month, or if you watch our videos online, you can check out what the other schools are doing as well. It's a great time for the board members and the community to hear what's going on beyond the walls of our district. So at this point, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. The regular meeting of the Upper Darby School Board of Directors will please come to order. There was a closed session this evening from 6:15 PM till 7:35 PM for matters to be discussed within the limitations for closed deliberations as prescribed by Pennsylvania Act 93 of 1998. For this evening's meeting, they were personnel, litigation, and real estate matters. Roll call, please, Mr. Rogers.
Ms. Gentile? Here. Mr. Des Noiers?
Here.
Ms. Jordan?
Here.
Dr. Rucci?
Here.
Dr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Ms. Curry?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Mitchell?
Here, thank you. Dr. Rucci, I have the minutes of the combined work session and regular meeting.
Thank you, Madam President. The minutes of the combined work session and regular meeting of September 10th, 2019, are in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Are there any comments from the board? Comments from the public about the minutes? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Gentile?
Aye.
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 Dr. Rucci?
Aye.
Dr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curry?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, thank you. Dr. Rucci, the report of the secretary?
Thank you. The report of the secretary is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Are there any comments from board members about the report of the secretary? Comments from the public? Seeing none, roll call, please, Mr. Rogers.
Ms. Gentile?
Aye.
Mr. Des Noiers?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Rucci?
Aye.
Dr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curry?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell?
Aye, motion carries. Dr. Rucci, the report of the treasurer?
The report of the treasurer is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Any comments from the board? Comments from the public on the report of the treasurer, sorry. Seeing none, roll call, please, Mr. Rogers.
Ms. Gentile?
Aye.
Mr. Des Noiers?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Rucci?
Aye.
Dr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curry?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next up, we have our report from our student board representatives.
The month of September marked a successful beginning to the 2019-2020 school year. We celebrate our newly renovated gym and bathrooms, which students are excited about. We had the ribbon cutting ceremony to celebrate the new track and turf field. This state-of-the-art facility has been worth the wait. Thanks to Bill Miller, our 1981 graduate, Miller Flooring, Pinoni, the Upper Darby School Board of Directors, our superintendent, and of course, the community, we have a track and field that is Olympic certified and one of five in the world. We are the only high school in the state of Pennsylvania to have this. Pinoni says the greatest engineers recreated this field starting July. They had to start as if they were creating a new field.
A representative from Miller Sports Construction says you're the only high school in the state of Pennsylvania with a female principal and a state-of-the-art field. And this is something you should be really proud of. Former athletic director, Holly Fancy, says the athletic activities are the front porch of the school and this is what people see and this is our pride. Lamia and I also had the privilege of meeting two graduates and football champions of 1961. One of them was a captain and the other one a defensive lineman. They said the field looks great and I'm looking for another championship. Talking to the alumni made us realize that Upper Darby High School hasn't changed much. We continue to strive for excellence. One of them said, "When I came back to the 55th reunion, I walked around the halls and was really impressed with the atmosphere. Students were focused on their learnings."
Our spotlight consists of our annual pep rally to celebrate our school pride and our first AP night, which was honoring the brilliant students and teachers in the school. We also had Fox 29, Kelly's Classroom, celebrate our new track and turf field with our athletes, band members, and seniors.
Thank you to the Upper Darby School District Board of Directors and administration for allowing us to provide the monthly report. We will continue to serve the board and community and share the joyous news and prideful happenings across the district.
Thank you. To bring this all together, we have a short video for all of you.
Really great video. Really captured, I think, the excitement that has been in the air with some of the facilities improvements. Just, you know, over the past year, well, actually, the past six years that I've been on the board, I've done a lot of advocacy for state funding for our district. And about a year ago, I attended a dinner that some local school boards, presidents got together. Just, you know, just to enjoy each other's company and really talk about the challenges and try to encourage some of our overfunded districts to advocate for us. And one of the things we talked about was just even our student athletes. I mean, what I was always hearing as having a child who is an athlete is, why can't we have facilities like that? And we have it now. So I'm thrilled that our community was able to support that at this time for our students and our athletes and our whole community, really, 'cause I think it's gonna be a great asset for us. So, thank you for highlighting a beautiful video. Can we get that up online?
I think it's copyrighted, so I'll probably not, what we're talking about.
So, thank you. Next up, we have our budgeted personnel and enrollment reports. They've been made available to the board and the public. And they're recorded as part of the record, no vote is required. The next up is our report of the superintendent, Dr. McGary.
It was emotional for me, Lamia and Kiran, because I think it speaks to what we're going after. I want to say to Josh and to Joanne, as well, and to your staffs, the school district's pride will come from you, the staff, the kids in this district. And seeing that tonight is, it's moving. And seeing that you guys were there for that football game and the opportunities there, we just have to capitalize on it. So, good evening, Board President Mitchell, members of the board, administration, student representatives, teachers, staff, students, parents, and members of the community of the Upper Darby School District. It is hard to believe that we are seven weeks into the school year. Each school has been working hard to engage students and families in their child's academic and social learning. If you've been keeping up with our social media posts from schools across the district, you can see just a snapshot of how hard our teachers and staff work and are working to make each child's educational experience here in Upper Darby School District a memorable one. Tonight, we are recognizing two students who won the Distinguished Young Playwrights Award. Tamea Lowe and Amber Hill, if you can come up here, if you made it out tonight. They may not have made it out. Tamea won second place for her play, Simply Peps. And Amber won her third-place play for The Truth. I will certainly go out and hand-deliver this and we'll get a picture of that in the schools with the students. And I said Amber won third place for The Truth. For those who may not know, Upper Darby School District has been partnering with the Youth Playwrights Program for over 20 years. For a full school year, a class of students from Drexel Hill Middle School in Beverly Hills participate in workshops at their schools with a professional playwright from the organization. These students are at the top level academically in their English classes and work closely with these literary professionals to improve their writing-based literacy skills and their 21st century skills like communication, collaboration, and creativity. These students go on to participate in a playwright competition with students across the area. To me and Amber, we congratulate them on this amazing accomplishment. And we will present them with a certificate in their buildings probably tomorrow. Other happenings across the district. Several families joined Dr. Yerson and his team at Beverly Hills Middle School for their community barbecue on Saturday, September 28th. From what I hear from Dr. Manfree, who was able to attend on behalf of the district, it was a good time for the families to get together and to meet BH, the BH staff. And there were lots of activities for the families and good food, from what I'm told. We look forward to this event again next school year. Brian deserves a tremendous amount of credit, as do his staff at Beverly Hills. Their community outreach just continues to go above and beyond. Brian's just doing an excellent job there. The annual ELL Services Fair took place at Beverly Hills Middle School on Saturday, September 21st. We had representation from the county and township agencies. They were on hand to help us guide our immigrant families to how to access services here in the community, as well as in the county. Additionally, we provided free books to the students and their families who attended that September 21st event. The Upper Darby School District Job Fair was held on September 19th in partnership with Substitute Teacher Services, STS. Administrators, union leaders, teachers, and support staff represented the district. Career Link out of the Delaware County Community College also supported the event by providing employment resources. The Job Fair was a great opportunity to expose members of the community to a variety of available positions. More than 130 potential candidates attended this event. Update on facilities. In line with our comprehensive facilities improvement plan, we are continuing our efforts to improve schools across the district and are still working on our plan to ease overcrowding in our elementary and middle schools. I would like to provide you with an update on the status of our pool renovation. The major work has been completed so far, but a few cosmetics are still in progress. So far, we've replaced the pool roof, replastered the pool, power washed the benches, upgraded the electrical box, repaired the showerheads, and painted the benches in the locker room. We've also replaced all water filters. We upgraded our water management system as well. There's an upgrade to the manual and automatic system so that we can clean it and keep up with it. One of the two new diving boards will arrive late in October. Since a new diving board cost about $17,000, the second board will be purchased, hopefully, next year in our budget. We expect to have new starting blocks for the students with the new royal logo in early December. And the new UD banner that will go over the entrance to the locker room will arrive, hopefully, by the end of this week. We have also removed the old outdated ADA pool lift that was there and it will be replaced soon. Finally, we'll be purchasing new pool lanes in a pool vacuum and repairing the scoreboard for our athletes that participate in the pool. We promised the students that last year and when we're coming through. Upper Darby High School texting threat. As you're aware, Upper Darby High School was in lockdown Thursday, September 19th. The lockdown was a result of students and staff doing the right thing and reporting something they saw on a text chain, feeling uncomfortable about it and reporting it to an adult. The police were notified, responded quickly, and went to work vetting out the situation. Can't thank our police and our administration, Kelly Simone, Dr. Manfree, Lou Gentile, and our local police for the work that they do. The police were notified, they came to the school, they vetted the situation. And we attempted to keep the board, parents, staff, and the media informed throughout the process. Rhonda Buford, our communications leader here, did an awesome job that day throughout a series of communications, through our robo-email system, ParentLink, and all the other media platforms that we have access to at this time. The halls were silent and all of the doors were locked. And there is pride in that, but it's also a traumatic experience for our students. After approximately 45 minutes, we were allowed to downgrade the lockdown to a shelter in place. The police reported to us that the lockdown went very well and we're very impressed with our administration, our security, and our students. Upper Darby Police were able to identify the students involved in our district and any students outside of our school district that were involved. Following the lockdown and subsequent shelter in place on September 19th, there were several copycat posts in electronic communication throughout social media in the afternoon and throughout that evening. We contacted the police, who immediately began to investigate. After speaking with the persons involved, police determined that there was no real active threat against our schools and Upper Darby High School opened on a normal schedule. We consider it a very beneficial practice to review with all of our Upper Darby High School students, given the social media that day, the pitfalls of such behaviors, to prevent it and to deter students from doing it in the future. We know that some students might engage in posting such content or in spreading such content because they are not aware that this behavior can have serious implications. All of such threats will be investigated. We will do, always choose to act out of an abundance of caution. Students need to know that they do leave digital footprints that can be tracked.
Ms. Currie.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell.
Aye, motion carries. The next up is our personnel report. Dr. Taylor?
The personnel report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second. Are there any comments from board members?
Yes. I just wanted to say thank you to our retirees for their years of service to the district, and we wish you a happy and restful retirement.
Are there any other comments from board members? Comments from the public on the personnel report? Seeing none, poll vote please, Mr. Rogers.
Ms. Gentile.
Pursuant to the Pennsylvania Public Official and Employee Ethics Law, I hereby declare that I am required to abstain regarding the following issue: Personnel Report, Extra Pay for Extra Duty and Responsibility, Page 1. For everything else, I vote aye.
Mr. Des Newiers?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Rucci?
Aye.
Dr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Currie?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell?
Aye, motion carries. The next up is the Facilities Report, the Use of Facilities Report, and the Donation Report. Ms. Jordan?
Thank you, Madam President. The Facilities Report, the Use of Facilities Report, and the Donation Report are in the hands of each board member and have been made available to the public, and I move for their adoption this evening.
Second. Are there any comments from board members?
I do have a comment. On the Donation Report, you will see that a number of gift cards have been provided to our, from our local restaurants and establishments to give to our teachers for a program called the No Pain, No Gain Teacher Gamification Program. I did reach out to Ms. Simone today to find out exactly what that program is, and it is a staff initiative to increase the positive climate and culture in the school. Each year, I mean, they are competing in a challenge to try instructional strategies, meet new staff members, develop relationships with each other, and with students. Each faculty meeting, they give out the prizes, such as what we're seeing, the donations, to staff members to earn the most points. So, the gift cards are part of the award program.
I know that the gift card donations for this particular report are documented, but I want to say as an active member of my elementary school, home and school, and probably all the home and schools across the district, there are so many donations that go out from our communities. So, we just thank all of our donors for everything that we have here in Upper Darby School District, and the hard work that all the community members and parents come together, and the administrators in school communities come together so that we can have our activities for our children. So, thank you very much, donors.
Any other comments from board members? Comments from the public? Seeing none, poll vote please, Mr. Rogers.
Ms. Gentile?
Aye.
Mr. Des Newiers?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Rucci?
Aye.
Dr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Currie?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell?
Aye, motion carries. Did I miss anything? Finance and Budget Report, Mr. Brown.
The Finance and Budget Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second. Any comments from the board? Comments from the public on the Finance and Budget Report?
We'll do that. James Santura, 5228 Apache Lane. I think this is the appropriate time because I heard mention of buses at some point during this. I just want to thank Mr. Lee. I came to the last meeting and asked to have the buses removed from Township Line, and that has been done. I'll keep an eye, of course, but thank you. And Dr. McGary, I assume you had something to do with that as well. I appreciate it, and I think the students and families along Township Line appreciate it. It's for the safety of our kids, and I want to thank you for that. I was doing a little homework before coming to the meeting, and I was a little surprised when I pulled up the payables, and I assume that falls under Budget and Finance, and I saw approved private school payments and families' names listed next to those. Besides the fact that I know a lot of those families are under a confidentiality agreement and can't discuss it, I'd assume the school district broke that confidentiality by publishing their last names. Number two, I believe there's violations at the state level on this, and probably if any of those schools are administering any type of medicines or counseling, there's HIPAA violations as well. This needs to be corrected, and it needs to be corrected quickly. And it's only select names. And I don't know if it falls because of certain schools that they go to, but there's others. I went back into the report, and I'm not going to mention the schools. I'm not going to mention the names. But there are some schools that the name's not listed, or there's initials. To me, that's bad enough. There shouldn't even be initials. You guys are looking like you don't know what I'm talking about.
If you would point that out to myself and Mr. Marshallack after the meeting, I would appreciate that.
I will do so.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the public on the Finance and Budget Report? Seeing none, poll vote please, Mr. Rogers.
Ms. Gentile?
Aye.
Mr. Des Newiers?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye, and I guess making sure that we clean up the report before it gets published.
Dr. Rucci?
Aye.
Dr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Ms. Currie?
Aye.
Mr. Brown? Ms. Mitchell?
Aye, motion carries. The next up, we have our collateral assignment reports. Mrs. Jordan, the Delaware County Community College?
The only thing to report is that the end of the month is the annual meeting. All school board members are invited. It's October 30th, I believe. I think you have invitations.
For the Community College, I did receive a letter of correspondence from Delaware County Community College on August 27th thanking the board, and I'm assuming that this went to all board members, but I don't know, so I just want to make sure that the board is aware, expressing their gratitude for our support of the resolution to purchase the Prendegras property and thus to expand the college so as to better serve the community and the students. So, if any board members didn't receive that, I have it here if you'd like to look at it. The next is the Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board. Dr. Taylor?
So, the Delaware County Intermediate Unit offers monthly workshops for parents in anywhere in the county, and so this month's free workshop is focused on homework wars, so peacekeeping tips for parents. Parents will feel empowered to develop and maintain an effective routine for managing daily homework with their children, learn tips and tools for assisting children with homework, fostering their confidence, and removing the conflict over homework between parent and child. This session is going to be tomorrow, actually Wednesday, October 9th. It's going to be from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and it's at the DCIU Morton location, for anyone who's interested.
Legislative Council. I know we were supposed to have a meeting tomorrow, Mr. Fields, but it's been canceled due to the Jewish holiday. It's going to, the next meeting will be after, the day after our board meeting in November. Did you have anything else that you wanted to add?
Thank you. Just from the last Legislative Council meeting, the main topic of discussion was Governor Wolf's proposed charter school reforms, and just the main thing that sticks out is the proposed $86,000 application fee for new charters. That would have to be paid by the charter, so this would eliminate a lot of frivolous applications. If you're familiar with any of those, it would have people, right, it would have people, they would have to be, have a real charter, a real application, a very serious application, if they were going to spend that amount on that fee. So, that is one of the options. School choice proponents obviously would have a problem with this, so it's important that you let your legislators know, the governor know, that charter reforms like this are things you support. You need to contact them directly. And then at a federal level, the Individuals with Disabilities in Education Act, House Resolution 1878, this is to increase the funding for this so that school districts get more funding for special education. All our local congressional reps in the area are sponsors on this act, so hooray for them. And it's just a matter of other Pennsylvania reps and reps across the country supporting it. So, if you have family across Pennsylvania or in other states, ask them to check to see if their congressional rep is supporting this resolution. Ask them to, give them a call, write them a letter, send them an email to support it. It's a considerable amount of funding for our school and other schools in the area, and that's it.
Then, Mendel Hall Tyson, I'm sure we're not meeting at this point?
No, we're not ready yet.
Okay. Ms. Jordan, the home and, the home and school?
There was a date change for the meeting, so unfortunately I missed it, but Dr. McGary, I guess you can update.
Yeah, we reviewed the committee meetings for September and August and discussed what will be coming up moving forward, provided an update on the facilities plan, where we are in litigation and the next steps, discussed policies, reviewed the latest policies and discussions around participating in committee meetings or public meetings, and also asked for our home and schools to reach out and encouraged any of them in the home and school to submit a letter of interest to become part of the comprehensive planning for the school district, also that if they had any of the many dreams of becoming an administrator or a teacher to participate because they could be a good process to be a part of. It was a productive meeting, a lot of encouraging thoughts from the parents. The home and schools were encouraging and wanting to see improved schools, and it was a very positive meeting. We met at Beverly Hills, and we'll rotate again, and we'll put that meeting out again for the next month. I think it'll be at Drexel Hill Middle School the next time, and we'll publish that as well. It was well attended, and it was a good conversation.
Thank you, Dr. McGary. Technology, Mr. Brown or Mr. Rucci? Okay, how about PSBA representatives?
As far as PSBA, there is a leadership conference next week, the PSA, P S A, S, P A S A, PSBA School Leadership Conference from on October 16th through the 18th, and Ms. Jordan, Ms. Curry and I will be attending. We'll report back in November the amazing workshops that we, that we see.
That's great. I am proud to say that the district actually is putting on three presentations at the Pennsylvania School Boards Conference on, I believe it's Trauma and Form Care. Frank, could you just tell us the three different topics, please?
Sure. We're being featured as a part of the Youth Corp program, so we have Brian Cleary, eighth grade social studies teacher at Drexel Hill Middle School, who also teaches the Youth Corp program there. He's going to be a part of that presentation. The work that we're doing with McKay Consulting Group on learning targets, we have Melanie McCarthy, the principal of Charles Kelly Elementary School, and Kristen Meehan, the lead teacher, as a part of that presentation, and the work that we're doing with Lakeside Neurologic and Trauma and Form Care. We have Josh McNeil, who is heading up that initiative with Lakeside, is presenting alongside Bill Rogers, the principal of Primus, and Ann Hensel, the social worker from Primus. So, we're really excited.
Frank deserves a tremendous amount of credit. It's, it used to be, many years ago, that we were there on a regular basis. So, Frank, you know, compliments to you that, you know, Upper Darby has three presentations going on, and we're back to doing that. We used to be the top, top presentations there, and this board's put a lot of pressure on this office to get us back out there. And thanks to you, good job, really good job.
Thank you. PSBA has really stepped up their educational series for school board directors with the state now requiring, required school director training. They are helping school boards, current school boards, be able to help acclimate our new board directors with the education that they're going to need. They've presented an entire plan of how to onboard new board directors, and we'll be excited to share it with the first new class, so to speak, after the November election. So, next up, I hope that the community is enjoying the upgraded communication that the board has been doing, and Dr. McGary, ahead of our meetings. I still am hoping that we can figure out a way for the community to sign up to receive those, those updates. I think it would be helpful in some manner if we can continue to investigate that. Are there any other collateral reports from board members? Okay, any old business from board members? I know, Mr. Marshallack, you have some new business.
Yes, so tonight, here's a resolution regarding the recent mission of the Upper Darby Charter School for the Arts application that was received by the district on August 19th, 2019. Ms. Kelly and I presented the board with an analysis of our, of the application, the recent mission. Tonight's resolution is to vote, vote to deny the application. So, if you are in favor of denying the application, you must vote in favor of the resolution. If you oppose and the charter school be approved, you would vote not in favor of the application. So, again, just to make sure we're clear, the resolution is to deny the application, the resolution tonight. So, if you're in favor, if you'd like to deny the application for the Upper Darby Charter School for the Arts.
Thank you. So, at this time, I do need a motion to support the resolution to deny the charter school application. A motion. So moved. Okay. Are there any comments from board members? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, poll vote please.
Ms. Gentile?
Yes.
Mr. Des Newiers?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Dr. Rucci?
Yes.
Dr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Fields?
Yes.
Ms. Currie?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes, so the Upper Darby Charter School for the Arts is hereby denied. Any other new business from board members? Or the administrators?
Just want to say that I had the privilege, I just got back a little bit ago. I was at a superintendent's retreat hosted by the IU this past weekend in Washington, DC. Got to meet with other superintendents in the county and got to be a part of case study and presentation review work at George Washington University. I'll provide an update at the next superintendent's meeting. I don't have time to throw that all together for you tonight, being the DC traffic back here. I got the privilege of driving down with Dan Norelli, which was, which was fun as well, but it was great to meet with other colleagues and see the challenges that everybody's facing, special education teachers, shortages in that area, and the challenges that all the schools are facing. So, it was a positive, very positive meeting, very bright, talented people in the county, and I was honored to be there and thank you to the board to allow me to go. And I'll provide an update at the next meeting.
Thank you. We're now at the time for our public hearing. We'll call upon Upper Darby residents who signed in to address the board in the order in which they signed in. We would ask that you come forward, give your name and address, and present your comments in a three-minute time limit. Our first speaker is Dawn Matthews.
Good evening, board, and President Mitchell. I'm here to talk to you about transportation.
Your address, please, Ms. Matthews.
Oh, I'm sorry. My address is 1140 Morgan Avenue, Drexel Hill, 19026. I'm here to speak to the board about transportation to AIM Academy for my daughter. If you guys aren't familiar, AIM Academy is a school located in Concha Hockin, and they specialize in children with learning differences, which Julia has. Last year, my husband and I, we decided to move to Drexel Hill. Prior to closing, prior to moving, we contacted the Transportation Department of the Upper Darby School District. We were told by Barbara that the district buses to AIM. At that time, my husband and I, we packed up, we moved. We love the community. The problem is, is that we've been denied transportation to AIM Academy. So, for the past, since school's been in session, my husband and I, we've been driving Julia all the way to Concha Hockin. We're late for work. We are two working parents. We need our jobs. I've reached out to, I'm reaching out to the board because I really would like to see us come to some type of agreement. This is very, very important to us. We were led to believe that Upper Darby Township would transport Julia to school. To make matters worse, the child that is being bussed lives 250 yards away from my home, and my daughter is not on that bus. So, I'm asking the board, please, I, we cannot wait 30 days. We need action, and we need action now. I also did some additional research on the Pennsylvania state law in regards to transportation. So, from my understanding and my interpretation, and again, I spoke to Mr. Lee about it several weeks ago, the driving range has to be within a 10-mile radius from the furthest part of the Upper Darby Township. So, what I did, I used the address of the Summit Motel or Hotel located on Township Line Road, and I mapped out a way that the bus could possibly get to AIM Academy, and it's less than 10 miles. I reached out to Concha Hockin Bureau because there is a road, and the road that I'm speaking of is called River Road, and it's under construction. It is partially open, which means, since it's under construction, they're not sure when it will open or when it will be closed. But the fact still remains is that there's a way to AIM Academy within the 10-mile driving range. So, I'm asking, I'm begging the board, my husband and I, we need quick action on this. We cannot wait any longer. We purchased a home to be part of the community here and to have, you know, just some rules and regulations stand in, in the way of our little girl getting back and forth to school.
Ms. Matthews, if you could stay after the meeting and speak with Mr. Marshallack, I would appreciate it, okay?
Sure.
All right, thank you.
Yes, good evening. I have here what I-
Name and address, please, Ms. Parente.
Margaret Parente, 932 Blythe Avenue, Drexel Hill. And before the meeting tonight, I went online to your board docs, and I found the Treasury's report that was going to be approved tonight, and I'm looking at close to $90,000 in legal fees for the month of September. And I would like to, I did put a right-to-know in to find out exactly what the law firm of, what is, I think it's Fox Rothschild, is getting an hour to incur those kind of fees in one month, because that seems like very, very high to me. And, you know, since the taxpayers are paying for it, I think I'd like to know that.
You put in a right-to-know request?
I did.
Okay, then, I mean, the Office of Open Records will reply to you through Mr. Rogers about that inquiry.
Okay, I'll wait for that. Thank you.
James Santura, 5228 Apache Lane. I also put in a right-to-know over at the Upper Darby Township for anything involving zoning on the Aronomic School on behalf, because I was doing it in my role as president of the Aronomic Civic Association. I felt like we were working well together. I thought we were going down the road well together. We made some suggestions. You made some changes, and then I get a right-to-know response with a letter from Fox Rothschild, trying to circumvent the zoning process. I don't care if we're in favor of Aronomic, neutral on Aronomic, or against Aronomic. Don't circumvent the process. You talk about transparency. You talk about public hearings. You talk about discussing things with the public over and over again. This is circumventing the process. My understanding is it was denied, and you're going to be before the zoning board, but that's trying to circumvent the process. It also may be part of the $90,000 bill. On a different note, from the home and school standpoint, Ms. Curry, you're 100% right. What happens in all of our schools, including the high school, at the home and school, and I got to take it further. Our principal at the high school is phenomenal. She brought a team in this last home and school meeting, presented some of the things that are going to go on for our students, and it's just great. And I want to thank Mrs. Simone and her team, and all the teachers and administrators here at the high school, because they, with being the largest high school in Pennsylvania, the job they do is significant. So, thank you.
Tony Rigoso, I live at 817 Vermont Road, Drexel Hill. I've lived there for soon-to-be 70 years. My wife was once the president of the Home and School Association. All my kids were raised in Drexel Hill. All of my kids went to Aronomic School, and that's why I'm here tonight. Over the course of the last month or so, I've been reading these articles in the Inquirer about asbestos being found and intoxicifying materials being found in the public schools in Philadelphia, and I've sent you emails about it. You're probably tired of hearing from me. And I got a reply today from Mr. Salerno, which was a very good reply, and it was satisfying in a lot of ways. The thing that bothered me about it were two things. It does not really speak to the issue of what the exact plan is now. I'm assuming that the Aronomic School project is going to go forward. I have a grandson that's going to be there next year. We could have a problem there because once you start ripping things apart, you don't know what's going to be flying through the air. Instead of posting the answer that I was given today, thank you, it was a great answer, instead of posting on frequently answered questions, there ought to be a public airing about this because it's an important issue. People can get sick, and it's something that needs to be addressed. Most people don't know to go online and look at the answers to the frequently asked question section. So, you owe it to the public to say something to them in an open forum so that the issues can be addressed. Second thing I want to tell you is that there's no reason why you need to have a lease in Haver Town for your new administration building. We have empty space at Drexel Line, largely because of the efforts of a person on the school board. Why you can't go to Drexel Line and try and rent space from Drexel Line is beyond me. They have open stores. There's no projects yet. They're looking for tenants. Go down there, try and make a deal, spend our money in Upper Darby. Thanks.
Good evening. My name's Annette Fanning. I live at 5015 Morbine Avenue, and I am here again to comment on the Aronomic School Expansion Project. I want to reiterate my concern for the taxpayer, which does not at all shed any doubt on your intentions to improve the district and its schools. I want to make that clear, and I think our residents feel the same way. The plan, and this is my short rendition of what I've, of what I've interpreted on a very, I feel, limited communication basis. You're going to move in the administration to Haverford Township and pay a lease. You're going to expand Aronomic School. You're going to then move the kindergarten center to Aronomic School temporarily. Then, you're going to move SenCal to the kindergarten center. Then, you're going to build 69th Street. Then, you're going to move SenCal back to 69th Street. Then, you're going to put the kindergartners back in their home schools, and possibly, I'm not sure if this is true, move the administration to the kindergarten center. Eight steps, lots of moves, buses, transportation, considerable amount of dollars spent, to what is estimated to be around $24 million, and I believe it will be more. I suggest you build 69th Street first. They've been waiting a long time. Move SenCal to 69th Street, then move the administration and add eight classrooms to Aronomic School, which would add 200 seats. Then, you move the kindergarten center back to their home schools. There's 14 classrooms in Aronomic now. That's another 350 seats. That's 550 seats without putting a shovel in the ground, without spending a dollar. putting a shovel in the ground, without spending a dollar. Okay? But we want some, for some reason, 700 or 750 seats. There are 250 or something like that students now. The plan does not make sense. There's not reasoning behind it, I can't understand it. On the frequently asked questions, I feel insulted. I was not at the meeting, so I was away. Frequently asked questions do not give the community the give and take, you know, the conversation about what's happening. Frequently asked questions do not show the community every question, and of course, you're limited in your characters, and there's no back and forth. That's what this is all about. That's what community involvement is about. So I just wanted to express that concern to you again, and I will stand here, meeting after meeting, and stand up for our taxpayers.
Amy Sullivan, 5000 Marvine Avenue, Drexel Hill. I'm also here about the comprehensive plan. I wanted to know, I saw this flyer that says Comprehensive School Improvement Planning Committee, and has there been a planning committee that involved the community from the beginning of this plan? Okay, because I am on social media, and I never saw it. I didn't, I live right across the street from Aronimic School, I never saw a sign, a poster, I never saw a written communication about this plan. If a person is not, if a person is not on social media, how were they to know about it? I have parents who are elderly who live in the community, they didn't know about it. I know a lot of people who live very close to Aronimic School who did not know about this. They don't know to go to the website to find the information or, you know, I find, I feel that there should be more written communication, flyers and doors to alert the community, how their taxpayer money is being spent. This affects the taxpayers for years to come, and more thought and community involvement should be part of this plan before spending 24 million-plus money of, or hard-earned money, I go to work every day and earn it. I feel that the school board is elected by the community and should represent the community's interests more. I feel that the comprehensive plan does not solve the problem of overcrowding, busing, because your comprehensive plan in the end, I saw the catchment area map, and Aronimic School is at the end of the district, and the catchment area goes to Hillcrest. So if a person lives very close to Hillcrest, they're going to have to get themselves to Aronimic School. Hillcrest goes to, I can't, I don't have the map in front of me, but it goes to the next school. So it, it would make sense and common sense for the school to be in the center of the catchment area and not on the edge of the catchment area, and I don't, I haven't seen any reasoning on that. Why does Aronimic School have to be so large? To me, that does not solve the problem that you addressed at the meeting that you had in Aronimic's library, was busing. And children walking to their community school, and parents being involved in their community school, that would decrease the amount of parental involvement. Children walking to their schools, which decreases the busing, decreases parents driving their children to school, and this is long-term. Money that may not have been in your budget would be bus drivers, salaries, pensions, these are long-term economic concerns.
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan. If you could wrap up your comments, you've reached your three-minute limit.
Okay.
Thank you.
Some of the things have already been addressed, but I also feel, when are these reports available to the community? Like how far in advance of your meeting?
They're available at midnight. Could you, Craig, I think it's midnight Tuesday night.
Okay.
Yeah.
The morning of the meeting? See, I don't feel that that's enough time for a resident to be prepared for this meeting to go through these reports.
The reality is, that's a committee meeting, that information, so that is presented publicly for public back and forth, and then it comes to a meeting like this. So there's a good month of information shared prior to the board taking action on anything. It's not just several hours.
Suzanne Britis, 319 Austin Drive. I wanted to address the public engagement policy. Back in July of 2014, we changed how we engage the public at board meetings. We limited the discussion to agenda items at committee meetings only. The back-and-forth dialogue at the regular board meetings ended at that point, and I feel like we are running into a lot of situations where this is creating more issues than it's helping, this format. We're creating barriers to the ability for the community to engage and go back and forth. We talk about reports being shared on Tuesday morning. There are sometimes items on the reports that are not typically discussed at a monthly committee meeting, and there's really no forum for a member of the public to publicly discuss that back and forth with the administration and the board. Another resident brought up the Fox Rothschild. It would be helpful when these expenditures are shown in the reports, that there's the opportunity to ask questions about that. Are we meeting our targets as far as budget and spending and things of that nature? We have a lot of initiatives, a lot of things that we're trying to do in the district, and when we're limiting the ability to have back-and-forth dialogue, it creates hard feelings between the community and the board. If you really want those partnerships, you need to have the ability for more back-and-forth dialogue, and I don't feel that the committee meeting is doing, doing enough.
Thank you, Mrs. Britis. We'll take that under advisement.
I'm Christina Heffernan, I live at 907 Child's Avenue, and my comments were really just about the comprehensive plan and the effect on taxes. I live in a house that I bought 13 years ago, and the property taxes in total are about $12,000 a year. So when you say it's going to be $3,000 for the average taxpayer, I'm not an average taxpayer, mine will be double that, and I'm, my comments are really that this is just completely not sustainable for the people who live in my immediate neighborhood. There are houses selling for $150,000 and $200,000. I would be lucky if I could get what I paid for my house 13 years ago, for a house that we have quite literally spent hundreds of thousands of dollars updating. So I just would hope that the long-term plan, I mean, I agree with Amy's comments, I really do believe if, I would love the best for the school district, but children do best in a community neighborhood school, and this, this larger $24 million plan doesn't seem to, to me, to address that basic need. And it's what my kids had, walking down the street to school, and I just think that every kid deserves that.
I agree with you 100%, Mrs. Hefferman. I mean, we are trying to, I'm sorry, I mispronounced your name.
It's fine, everyone else.
We're trying to bring back a whole community of students who's currently bused to Glen Olden. They've been bused to Glen Olden for approximately 13 years in a rental building that we rent outside the district, also a building in Charles Kelly Elementary School that those kids are coming out of their community.
I know, I've seen the whole.
So, and we are addressing it so-
But I just think this Aronimic neighborhood is not where the need is.
I got you.
Mrs. Sullivan, Mrs. Heffernan, there's two different things. What you have in your hand right there is a comprehensive plan for the new district comprehensive plan, asking for people to be involved, not the facilities plan, that's the academic and social-emotional plan, that flyer that you have. I could be more than willing to sit with both of you and sit down, and we could set up a time to meet after this meeting, if you would like. Sure.
Hi, I'm Melissa Baldwin, I live at 328 North Oak Avenue in Clifton Heights. I know that there's been a lot of back and forth about the whole, everything with Aronimic. I work at Aronimic, I have a kid who goes to Westbrook Park, I have another kid that goes to Drexel Hill Middle, I'm really involved in the community, I do a lot with home and school in our school. I know that there's a lot of back and forth between the builds and everything. This community needs it. We need the facilities, we need the updates on the facilities. I know that there's things happening in Aronimic. A lot of people who are upset or not real excited about the things at Aronimic probably haven't been in the facility in a very long time. These updates are needed. I watch the kids every day play basketball, and they actually can't shoot the basketball because they hit the ceiling. We can't have basketball nets that are high enough. And I know that that sounds like something stupid, but the kids need these athletic programs for social interaction. I mean, there's more to school than just academics. My kids are involved in sports, they're involved in academics, they're involved in a lot of different things, and I know that that's what these communities thrive on. As far as the middle school is concerned, and I know it really hasn't been brought up today, and I haven't spoken at any of the other meetings, my daughter goes to Drexel Hill Middle, it's a great school, I love that school, I live three blocks from the field that they want to build on. They don't use the entire property. We wouldn't be losing the fields, we'd be gaining a school. They'd still be using the same amount of field space, and people aren't understanding that, and they want to say, but our taxes will go up. If we fight this in court, our taxes are going to go up to fight this. This is part of that legal fee that you guys see on there. Our taxes will go up, no matter what. And if, if you're going to fight it for a field or to not build onto Aronimic, you're, you're paying school district taxes for a field, instead of to better our children's education, instead of bettering our facilities that we have. It's, it's something that's needed in this community, and it seems like every time that the school board or the Upper Darby Township tries to do something to better our community, somebody's always fighting it, instead of embracing change. We can't keep things the way that they've been all these years, because it just breaks down. You have to improve, and you have to, you see it in the other communities, go to Springfield, go to Havertown, go to Ridley, go to Brumel, they put this money back into the community, and the community thrives. Our community hasn't done that, and it's falling.
Thank you so much for your comments. Our next speaker is Kira Rafalides.
Hi, it's Kira Rafalides, good job. 309 Windermere Avenue. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about the school security, so I was really glad to hear about the grants that you've applied, or that not only applied for, that you've earned, I didn't know about that, which is great. So I think you added up to about $3 million, right, for school security?
We, we actually, the original grant we wrote was for over $4 million. We have about $2.5 million that we earned, and we're going to go after, you know, close to another $600,000. But we've earned about over $2.5 million in grants, we're just waiting for the money to come through.
Okay, that's, that's wonderful, so thank you for going after that. I had come up maybe about a year ago to talk a little bit about school security, and I think I had not expressed myself well, because I was quoted in the Delco Times as being against common sense gun reform, which is not what I was trying to say. What I was trying to say was that I'm against doing things without research behind them, and doing things only because they feel, you know, going with our guts, or just, it feels like so-called common sense, when in fact, we haven't investigated whether or not it's effective, and, and, you know, has a proven track record of effectiveness. So that was, that should have been my actual quote. So I just want to, you know, make sure that this money is spent on programs that have research behind them, and I think it would be great if, I don't know how many people would want to get into it, but I would be interested to read the research behind all the different programs and, and equipment that you're getting. It would be great to release that to the public, you know, why, why were these specific features chosen? Thank you.
Much for your comments. That ends our public hearing. Is there a motion in order? Excuse me?
I'm sorry, this is my first board meeting, and I didn't know I had to sign in to say something, so could I have?
Unfortunately, that's our policy. I'm happy to take your comments at the end, if you have them written, you can submit them for the record.
No, I actually wanted to-
Okay, I'm sorry, but this is the way, this is the speaker's list. Is there a motion in order for adjournment?
So moved.
All in favor?
All in.
Aye.